Again, welcome to the Collin County Board of Commissioners meeting this evening for September the 22nd, 2025. I'd like to welcome those who are in attendance in our audience this evening, as well as those who are joining us by social media platforms. And at this time, we're going to have our invocation. We have Pastor Chris Kirby with the Setrus Creek Baptist Church with us this evening, and we'll follow that with our pledge of allegiance, and Commissioner Donnie Potter will lead us in that. So, welcome Pastor Kirby.
Thank you, sir. It's an honor to pray over you, man. Pray over this county. My earnest prayer is that each one of you know the Lord Jesus Christ is your Savior. It's my prayer that each one of you would heed His leadership and His guidance and His direction as you lead this county. It's only when this county, this state, and this nation becomes godly again, it'll truly become great again. I'm reminded of Scripture that says righteousness exalts a nation, but sin is a reproach to its people. Men, I pray that you hunger for righteousness and thirst for holiness. Let's go to the Lord in prayer. Father, I thank you for this day. God, I thank you for your goodness. Lord, I thank you for your mercy, God, your grace that you bestow on us. God, thank you for this opportunity to meet and discuss future decisions for our county, this great state, and this great nation. Father, we come to you to seek wisdom. We come to you to seek guidance. We come to you to seek direction this afternoon. Father, I pray that in every decision, God, that you would have lordship and leadership. God, I pray that you would fill us with wisdom. God, I just pray that you would just use these men to lead us and to guide us and direct us. Father, I pray over my county. God, I pray over my state. I pray over my nation this evening. Father, make us godly again, and Father, make us great again. Lord, may every decision, every word, every action glorify, honor, and magnify the name of Jesus Christ, my Lord, my Savior, and my soon-coming King. For His glory, in His name we pray. Amen. May God bless each and every one of you.
Everyone face the flag, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you, everyone. Any amendments to our agenda this evening?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We need to remove item number seven, communications purchase of a recorder for communications center due to some additional information. We need to get for that before we bring that back to you. And then we need to add an item 27, which we got gentlemen have before you, which is a budget revision to spend grant the sheriff's department received aiming for accreditation grant that you guys accepted last month. So, this is the budget revision to actually spend those funds. So, that'd be item 27.
All right. Hearing the recommendation of our interim county manager, what's the pleasure of the board in adopting our agenda this evening?
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept this evening's agenda as the interim county manager has presented.
Any other comment or discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, and that motion carries. And so, that brings us to our first item, and Mr. Josh Engel, our 2015 tax release. Welcome, Mr. Engel.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. Each year, my office presents the 10-year-old delinquent taxes to you. Per North Carolina General Statute 105378A, these taxes are no longer collectible by enforced collections. For 2015, the number of total real and personal property taxes outstanding is $71,789.62. I'm requesting to the board for the release of these 10-year-old delinquent taxes.
All right. So, hearing the recommendation of our tax administrator, do I hear a motion that we approve the releasing of these taxes in the amount of $71,789.62?
So moved.
All right. Any other discussion or comment? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, and have motion carries. So, thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Josh.
Next is our public information officer, if you will, but Ms. Page counts, and she's got a presentation about America 250, a big birthday coming up.
A big birthday coming up, and I thought I'd start at the beginning and lead you through the county's history. I'm only kidding. I'm only kidding. I want to get out of here tonight. 2026 marks 250 years since the signing of the Declaration of the Independence and the creation of a new nation created in pursuit of liberty, the creation of a new nation dedicated to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Our country has undergone many changes and faced many challenges since our founding, but it's given us a good story to tell and a rich history. Caldwell County, too, has a rich history and a great story to tell, and that's what we're going to do as we celebrate America's 250th birthday. We're going to tell our story, explore our history, and celebrate what makes Caldwell County great. In Caldwell County, we're asking towns, businesses, churches, civic groups, neighborhoods, everybody to get involved with America 250. Here, the public information office has taken the lead. We helped form an America 250 committee, and thanks to grant funding, we are building a display right here in this building that will showcase the history of Caldwell County. As we've worked on the display, what we've learned is there's more history than we have room for in a single display. So, we're creating a timeline. Right now, that timeline is about 30 pages long of history of significant people and significant events taking place here in the county. That timeline will go on our America 250 website, and from that timeline, we will use it to create some trivia questions, but we'll also use it to maybe host a Jeopardy! style game show for our TV channel. We'll also use our channel and our YouTube channel to talk with local historians and interview longtime residents. To date, we've conducted four interviews with our oldest resident being over 100 years old. I believe she was 100 or will be 103 in November. But our primary focus is the display. We received a grant from the Department of Natural and Cultural Resources to pay for the display. It will be the length of the upstairs and downstairs hallways, and it will begin with our earliest inhabitants and continue through the county's founding in 1841. The rest of the display will break the county's history down in 20-year increments so that we can see what life was like in Caldwell County. To understand life in Caldwell County, we thought it was best to look through the lens of five categories: worship, education, recreation and culture, industry, and those significant events that shaped Caldwell County. And right now, we're looking for illustrations, photos, videos to showcase those events to help us understand what life was like in each period. There's also going to be a much larger display here in the county. Soon, very soon, you will see 250 atop Highbright Mountain. Thanks to Dick Gardner, who I'm calling the Keeper of the Star. He's the person who makes sure the star and cross are lit every year. 250 will be up on the mountain, and it'll appear until Thanksgiving. At Thanksgiving, the star will come up, and then shortly thereafter, the cross will appear. So, in April of 2026, when the star and the cross go dark, 250 will appear again until Thanksgiving of 2026, as a reminder that we're celebrating America's 250th birthday. And I do want to point out that no county tax dollars have gone to pay for that. That's all been through donations. Every time our committee meets, we talk about ways to celebrate. However, we don't have funding, so we're looking for everyone to get involved. It may mean businesses or towns plan a special event recognizing America 250. It could be a community picnic. It could be a square dance. It could be anything you can imagine that will honor this special birthday, and it doesn't have to be at the Fourth of July. You may do it earlier or later because we'll be celebrating for the entire year. Groups may also decide that planning one more celebration is more than they can handle. So, what we're asking them to do is consider adding an America 250 component to their event. It may be a history display. It may be a 250-yard dash. It's just whatever they can think of that is a way to celebrate. Other ideas include maybe doing a time capsule or sponsoring a class project. Any way people can get involved, that's our goal. Now, this would not be possible without the hard work of many people, and we have been working on this project since the beginning of this year. We have quite a large committee of historians, local folks who just want to get involved, and we greatly appreciate them helping us on this project. They have helped us with everything from developing a history timeline to lining up people to interview for our television program and finding ways to promote America 250. So, I greatly appreciate all these people, and I may have left someone off this list, but I hope they'll forgive me if I did. To learn more about Caldwell County's history, you can visit one of our history museums here in the county. We have on our website the location and hours of each of these museums. You can also see on the America 250 page, we have videos detailing the first, probably until about 1940, on our website. We also have a calendar of events, and it's a great way for folks to connect with us. People can also get more information about America 250 on our Facebook and Instagram. So, thank you, gentlemen, for the opportunity, and I'm going to ask if you have any questions.
Anybody?
No questions. Y'all doing a good job.
That sounds good.
Thank you.
Appreciate all your hard work on it. Does anybody in the county do a Fourth of July celebration, other than Cedar Rock? Doesn't Hudson do a?
Hudson does a kitty car parade that they've done for well, yeah, a long time, and City of Lenore does fireworks. So, there are several that do Fourth of July celebrations.
All right. Well, thank you. Next is a loss of records server error information from our clerk, Ms. Abby Rich.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Per guidance from the North Carolina Department of Cultural and Natural Resources, I have been advised to read into the record the loss of public records due to a server error. These records include all records kept in an online drive during Thomas Welch's tenure as clerk. Without knowing the entire contents of the folder, I am unsure of all of the files that were lost. The most notable files that were compromised were the closed session minutes from June 3rd of 2019 to November 15th of 2021. The old server that hosted these files was dying and started corrupting files. A switch was made to a new server. However, some folders, such as those of the previous clerk, were corrupted before the switch could take place. IT worked for a week and a half to recover these files but were unsuccessful, as even the backup files had been corrupted by the dying server. To mitigate any record loss such as this in the future, I now save files on a desktop drive, the OneDrive cloud, retain printed copies, and I'm working to save all of these files through the SharePoint. There is no action to be taken on this matter, only the requirement of reading it into the official record.
All right. So, I assume you just did that.
I did.
So, thank you for that. Thank you for being diligent in figuring out what we needed to do as well. So, we appreciate that, Abby.
And I'm sure if our brainchild sitting out there couldn't pull it up, it can't be pulled up.
They weren't very hard.
All right. Next is our emergency services director guru, if you will, Mr. Trevor Key, and he's got a presentation this evening of our Western North Carolina Joint Emergency Operations Center. So, welcome, Trevor.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. As you know, in 2021, we set forth on planning and looking for funds for a new 911 communications center and emergency operations center. So, over the past four years, we've secured funding to move forward with a facility, and we've been in the statutory processes of RFQs for architects, for consultants. Fast forward, going into spring of 2025, that project had came to a halt when we figured out that the total cost of that facility minus the grant funds that we'd received were roughly about $20 million short. So, we started looking, looking for some partnerships with our state emergency management, along with additional grant opportunities, and the EDC, we have came up with and found two existing properties that would meet and exceed our needs for this project and also allow for us to have everything that we need inside of these. And these two properties are, one is our Helene Warehouse, and second is a non-disclosed property within the county that they have found thus far. So, moving forward, we have leased the Helene Warehouse for right at one year for that. It served many individuals within the county and state. Going back to the original design of the emergency operations center that we had came up with, it was a 41,000-square-foot building with a 13,000-square-foot ancillary building. So, these two buildings are roughly 36,000 square feet for office space, along with the $85,000 or, excuse me, $85,000 square feet of the warehouse. It's proven during the last year that larger space is needed due to housing our emergency response equipment and commodities both during and after a disaster. With that being said, the properties would require renovations and updates. However, with our current state directed grant funding that we have, this will allow us to purchase and renovate facilities without the use of any county funds. It is our plan to have actually a reserve if everything goes. And there's also other grant opportunities that we can apply for in the coming years, once we do agree to purchase and move forward with these projects.
All right. And part of that additional funding would be through 911.
That's correct. And we had received one for the original project last year, November of last year. However, since this is not the same scope, we had to return those funds.
Right, since we're potentially remodeling a facility.
Correct. So, we'd have to go through the process with the correct address, the correct square footage, all the details for specific to the new project that would come forward. And we'll say that we have consulted with the state budget office regarding the grant that we had received in the past. We did submit a preliminary amendment, and they did approve that to go forward with the project as we see for the future.
You did mention that no county funds would be.
No county funds. That's correct.
And it's all state grants?
State-directed grants. That's correct.
And we have Speaker Hall to thank for that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Speaker Hall.
I'm just desperate to know. I'll tell him, Rowell.
Yes, sir, Mr. Rasch.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. A couple of details, just to make sure everybody knows those. The property on, which is located at 240 Pleasant Hill Road in Hudson, is a sales price of $4.95 million. That will include the primary property and adjoining 6.5-acre tract. The current owners of that building wish to lease back the facility for a period of not more than six months. It may end up being less than that, but not more than six months. And then the warehouse, the Norwood Street property, is a $2.4 million purchase price. Our lease expires, expired August 31st on that particular property, so we do need to extend the lease as part of this motion as well. The next two months, lease payments will be credited to that purchase price, so therefore, we're not paying lease payments and then paying that on top of it. So, two months of lease payments will be credited to that purchase price of $2.4.
All right.
So, we'll get that back?
Yes, it'll be credited to the purchase price.
And with the, the purchase price would leave us with roughly $13,200,000 for the renovation and equipment for the emergency operations center and the comm. center.
What was the estimated cost on the first project?
The first project in March, when we got that, that number was right at $41 million.
That's what I thought, right around.
$41,200,000.
And this project, we think is going to be, how much?
Estimating, we're looking at purchasing and everything, probably in the 17, 16, 17.
Okay.
And like I said, if we, if we get successful with 911 grants, we can, we can cut quite a bit off of that as well. But right now, the estimates that we, we came up with were to do like a turnkey job with, with no external funding for what we've got.
Less than 20 million.
So.
From what we had projected to spend originally.
And it will, will meet our needs.
Yeah. I guess while we get to the point of, the original was 40, we're going to spend less than half of that to accomplish the same mission.
And with our state partnerships, we do have written from state emergency management to assist with annual financial commitments going forward.
On the warehouse.
On, 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 on everything that they share and co-locate with.
Yeah, okay.
Correct.
They're going to be inhabiting office space there as well, so, which is going to be the pretty big feather, feather for Caldwell County, having the Western Region Emergency Management Office located in Caldwell County.
And that will be for the, for the Western 33 counties, that will be the regional coordination center. So, any emergencies that's happening will be ran out of Caldwell County.
That's great. That puts them closer to us.
Trevor, I've had a lot of people ask me about the EMS base in Caiders Mountain. How's it coming along and what's the projected update?
It's coming along. Our anticipation was to be done with construction the end of this month. However, with the eight inches of rain that we received, I believe it was month before last, the site work has been pushed back quite a bit because of the mud and everything there. But right now, we're looking at, hopefully, we were looking at the beginning of November. Now, we're looking more mid to end of November, we hope. But biggest was the site work. Everything inside, the sheet rocks up, paints up, starting on floor appliances, stuff like that right now.
Okay. All right. So, we, do we need two motions on these purchases, or do, can we roll it all into one, one motion and purchase the Pleasant Hill project as well as the warehouse?
Yeah, you can do it all in one, just by way of reference to those two entities. Yeah.
All right.
You've got the motion, I think.
Yeah, somewhere. Yes, we do.
Is it?
Yeah.
If somebody wants to.
Okay. Well, I'll make the motion. I move to, for approval of the agreement, subject to review, edits, and approval by county manager and county attorney, and to grant county manager authority to sign the final agreement.
All right. Does that cover it?
Yeah.
We don't need a number?
And your motion is for both of those properties.
Yes, sir.
Right. Okay. That's good.
All right. It's always good to have legal advice to keep us on the straight and narrow.
Yep.
We follow the Lord, and then we follow the attorney.
That's right. Better do it in that order.
Yeah, that's right.
Amen.
So, he's first, and then the attorney. So, anybody else have any question or comment about that? I do want to say that this has been an ongoing, long process, and I know folks in our county have heard it through the past four years. I think you said 2021, we really started in earnest trying to, to build up a new emergency operations center, comm. center. Several trips have ensued to look at different facilities across the state of North Carolina to see what would meet our needs, and then a lot of design work has went into it. And, but I just want to say, I appreciate the effort, especially the fact that we can come back now and find a location that is, well exceeds our expectations. And I think we're going to make something really nice that Caldwell County can be proud of in this, in this new emergency operations center and communications center, and as well as housing the Western Region Office of the State Emergency Management, which is a big deal. And so, we are very pleased and happy about that and happy with all the work that you guys have put into it throughout the past four years. And it seems like to me, it's been a lot longer, but we certainly appreciate all the efforts that's gone into it. So.
Mr. Chairman, I also want to note that, you know, with this project, not only are we going to improve the, the facilities with EMS, but it's going to give us an opportunity to also improve the facility at Sheriff's Office, because right now, communications is housed in there, and they're, they've overgrown that place. I mean, we need more space there. So, not only is this going to help EMS and emergency management, it's going to be a big asset to the county, to Sheriff's Office as well, and allow them to grow and do better, have more room in there, too. So, kills a couple birds' wings, don't we?
Well, and then just the fact of the warehouse and how much product went through there during Hurricane Helene.
Yeah.
And how we were able to help folks in, in the western part of the state by being able to get things here to outsource on through. So, it's, it's big. And then the second part is getting all of our equipment into one location and a dry space now. We've been wanting that for years, and so hopefully, before long, you won't ride by our sheriff's office or Health Department out there and see all these trailers and things sitting around. They're all going to be put in this location, one central hub, so we don't have to spread them all over from Grace Chapel to Lenore and points in between. So, looking forward to that as well. So, with all of that, we've got a motion. Has anybody else got a comment? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, and have motion carries. So, thank you, Trevor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trevor.
Thank you, buddy.
All right. And that brings us this evening to our consent agenda, which is rather lengthy. So, I'll turn it over to our interim county manager, Mr. Wayne Rasch.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. We're trying to move through this as quickly as we can. Item number five on the consent agenda is animal care and enforcement requested use of donated funds, requires, allows them to use donated funds for purposes they need. Item number six, Sheriff's Office under kind of a vehicle trade-in to cover the cost of two undercover vehicles that have been compromised for the purchase of a new vehicle. Again, number seven has been removed. So, then we move on to number eight, communications purchase of a new antenna for the communications center. This was, funds are already in the budget for this, but it was an antenna that was damaged due to a lightning strike and needs to be replaced. Number nine is a budget revision that allows DSS to spend additional state funds allocated to them for foster children placement. Number 10 is a generator purchase, using funds from their existing budget to purchase a new generator for an EMS base from the Health Department. Number 11 is a WIC funding flow-through for the Health Department. And then number 12 is facility services, the mowing contract, and what that is, is to authorize a final payment to our mowing, current mowing contractor for their services. And then number 14, I'm sorry, 13, is a market adjustment for a level three building inspector to bring that salary in line with others in the area. And then number 14, actually, 14, 15, 16, and 17 are all grant applications for the Sheriff's Office. So, we'll not go through each of those in detail, but you've seen the information on those. And then number 18 is a building reuse grant proposal for Project Clean Meds, which our EDC is bringing to us, and this is using money from the state, but it does require a local match of $25,000. And that $25,000, of course, will be allocated from the sales tax reinvestment fund for a company that proposes to come in, invest 7.2 million in the county, and hire 71 full-time positions within the next, within the next two years. And so, then number 19 is a ratified proclamation for the 250th anniversary of Little John United Methodist Church. Item 20 is to allow the surplus of two dump trucks that are currently in the water department's inventory so that we can sell those. They've surpassed the mileage threshold, I think way surpassed the mileage threshold for our vehicles, and time to part ways. I think Way surpassed the mileage threshold for our vehicles, and time to, to part Ways with those. Item twenty-one is donation of computers to the school system, and these are computers that have come off lease, and we, we've gotten to the point now where it costs less to buy them than it does to actually ship them back, so we're doing that and, and then donating those to the public school system. Twenty-two is a, a application for fireworks for the town of Sawmills. Item twenty-three is a resolution which allows the county manager and county attorney to execute documents for the Purdue-Slackler opioid settlement, documents that need to be done in, in a timely fashion coming up soon. Item twenty-four is the reappointment of two members of the Granite Falls ETJ Planning Board, and item twenty-five is the appointment to the Regional Aging Advisory Committee. Item twenty-six is, of course, approval of your minutes from your last meeting, and item twenty-seven, as we added tonight, is a budget revision to allow the sheriff's office to spend grant monies that they received.
All right, one item of question on the Regional Aging Advisory Committee, do we need to read that name in?
Yes, I was getting ready to do that. So Robert Hatley was appointed.
All right. Robert Hatley. All right, any other question or comment about our consent agenda this evening? Again, pretty lengthy, but appreciate putting it all together, and with that, I'll call the question. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, and that motion carries as well. And so we're going to go into a closed session pursuant to General Statute, I'll make a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318 dot eleven A three and six, to consult with county attorney and discuss personnel matters, and so we don't expect any decision out of that this evening, and so you're welcome to leave if you'd like to at the end of our meeting, but if you don't, we'll come back out and close it, so, but anyway, do I hear, wait a minute.
May to adopt the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion to adopt.
I thought we did, sorry.
Called the, yeah, no.
I called the question.
I'll make that motion.
All right, so all in favor of adopting the consent agenda, aye. Aye. And all in favor of going into closed session, signify by saying aye. Aye. Thank you again for being here.